Good evening, Canby, and welcome to the Canby City Council Meeting for February 17, 2016. If you will please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear my Father, thank you so much for the great month that we have had. Thank you for the blessings in which you heap upon Canby every day. Thank you for the leadership that is here on the dais in our city. We appreciate oh so much and are so thankful for what you do for us. Please guide us, provide us wisdom, and please protect our men and women that are in harm's way. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is the proclamation for the Iwo Jima Remembrance Day, which is coming up here on Saturday. The Iwo Jima Remembrance Day, whereas on February 23, 1945, this country's armed forces were engaged in one of the most strategic and bloodiest battles of World War II, the Battle for Iwo Jima. And whereas the Canby Aurora Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Auxiliary 6057 of the United States have deemed it fitting to erect a flagpole at the Canby Adult Center in remembrance of those who took part in this great battle. And whereas each year the members of the Canby Aurora Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 6057, their auxiliary, and their fellow veterans organizations and service organizations, i.e. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Camp Fire, et cetera, conduct a ceremony to rededicate this memorial and replace the flags on the flagpole. And whereas the flagpole located at the Canby Adult Center is the only memorial in the city of Canby dedicated to our veterans who made such significant personal sacrifices during World War II in defense of this great nation. And whereas this year will be the 21st anniversary of the annual flag raising ceremony. Now, therefore, I, Brian Hodgson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the city of Canby, do hereby proclaim February 20, 2016, as Iwo Jima Remembrance Day. And call upon all individuals, schools, churches, organizations, and business establishments in the city of Canby to proudly remember the sacrifices made by our servicemen who fought so gallantly in this bloody and decisive battle. I further call upon all members of this community to join in commemorating this great event with a rededication of the flag at the Adult Center on February 20 at 10:00 a.m. to celebrate the 71st anniversary of the end of World War II, given under my hand the 17th Day of February 2016 in the city of Canby, Oregon.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, very much appreciate it. Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Councilmen and Women, I would like to count our first male auxiliary member, pass out some flyers to you that will discuss the Iwo Jima celebration we'll be having on Saturday and the breakfast afterwards, and we hope that all of you can come and attend and have a wonderful day with us and pray for sunshine. Even though rain is wonderful in Oregon, you know, it'd be nice to have a nice clear day and come in and honor our World War II veterans that we still have with us. So if you can put that onto your schedule, we would love to have you come and join us. Just hand one out to each person.
Could you also introduce Louie? Louie, just Louie.
Everybody's shy, I guess. I'd like to introduce one of our post-members, Louie. He is a Iwo Jima survivor, and so our celebration this Saturday is in honor of him and his fellow serviceman.
Thank you, Louie. Thank you. Keep him in line there, Pam. So, yeah, I'd really like to encourage as many people to come to this event as they can, those of you that are at home watching and will watch this the rest of this week. It is a great event. It is a, it's pretty powerful and pretty moving remembrance ceremony for our World War II vets. My grandfather is a World War II vet, 98-years-old, is still going strong, and some days I think he wants to join my grandmother, but, you know, the good Lord isn't quite ready to call him up yet, so. But it is a great morning and a great time to spend just remembering those that have served, do serve, and what they've sacrificed. So please come out if you can and have breakfast and listen to the speaker, so, thank you. I appreciate that. Next on the agenda is Communications. Evening, there, Mr. Speaker. Okay. Our first opportunity for citizen input in community announcements this evening, and I have no yellow cards, and Irene and Bob are not rushing to the podiums. Spencer with the pleasure. I think she is. Moving into Mayor's business, this evening, we started early at 6 o'clock and had our first kind of Budget Committee meeting for this year to discuss where we were or where we are year-to-date, as well as discussing budgetary items that we will see coming up as our first or our actual budget meetings for the 2016-2017 budget year. Those dates are going to be, for our first meetings, are going to be April 28, May 5, and May 12, and if need be, we will have additional meetings on May 19 and May 26. So please mark those on your calendar if you want to come and hang out with us and go over the city's budget and find out what's been going on. The hearing for the budget will, and adoption of the budget, will be on June 15, which will take, and then go into effect with the new fiscal year in July. Let's see, we had conversation this evening about the road maintenance schedule for this year. We have a budget of approximately $700,000 to do some paving here in the city, as our annual paving is part of the road maintenance fee that we see, as well as the 3-cent gas tax that we have. So roads, there'll be a long stretch on South Township, North Birch, and Sequoia. I know I'm leaving out some of our smaller stretches there, Rick, which were...
I didn't bring those. Mayor, I would share with you.
Yeah, I didn't write those.
Maybe 16th and 20th between Maple and Lupine, I think?
Wow, I'm impressed.
Okay. So in the Maple and Lupine areas, so. And that's also going to include some ADA ramp updates on the intersect, or the, at the intersections that we're doing the paving on, so just know that that's coming up. Last night, let me just say Wednesday, so Tuesday night, yeah, last night, attended the Friends of the Family, or Friends of the Library Annual Meeting, which was a really good turnout, appreciate that. There is a tremendous amount of activity that the Friends participate in and do. First off, that group has donated over $1,000 hours of volunteer time. The bookstore, which is the only bookstore in Canby, generates a thou, this past year generated over $1,000 a month in book sales, which, all of that goes to library programming. And so the events and things that the library holds, a lot of that, or almost all of that is covered by the Friends of the Library. So if you're looking for books or something to read, definitely keep the book garden in mind there at the library. And one of the great things, too, is with the construction of our new library and civic building, the Friends of the Library have collected over $4,700 already for the new library for amenities that will go inside the library, so that's a huge help for the project, and really appreciate the Friends of the Library and all that they have done, and I know that they're a great support to our library team, so thank you to them for that. Since we're on the topic of library, the city is doing a fundraiser, and so if you're interested in helping out, we've got a, let's see, I'll hold it up there for the TV, great donation booklet that, if you're interested in donating and having something named after yourself, you know, they start as low as $50 for study materials, and then there's things for AV equipment, self-service kiosks. If you want the fireplace named after yourself, it's just a small $15,000 donation, so.
Well, maybe not yourself, maybe honoring a family member.
Or honor a family member.
Or an organizational group.
So if you're interested in doing that, please go to, yeah, visit the city website, and then, Ralph, can we pick up the booklets there, Rick?
The city library will have them. I would recommend anybody with internet access go on the website because we have the entire list and lots of good information, I think, that anyone with an interest would appreciate and enjoy.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Last Friday, I got the opportunity to participate in Storytime with the Mayor at the library. I got to read the wonderful children's book, the follow-up to Click Clack Moo, which was Duck for President. So it was a fun event. There were crafts afterwards, and, you know, we had a pretty good turnout, I think, right? So hopefully I'll get an opportunity back. Hopefully I didn't do too bad, right, Erin? All right. I had a conversation with our ODOT area or district represent, representative, Mr. Wantanabi, recently, and so we just got an, just gave me an update on, there is design work being done. We're starting to see that come together for the Elm and 99E corner there. So we finally, there's money coming from, sounds like OTC, so the Oregon Transportation Committee, for the design project for that. Still not quite enough there to, I think, get it going and completed, but at least the design piece seems to be moving along. Is that kind of your...
That's accurate. ODOT has assigned staff specifically to design both the east and the west side, so left and right turn, Elm to 99. We'd originally anticipated that they'd only be looking at the right turn for westbound traffic, so it's really good to hear that they're looking at both sides. There are not identified funds for the construction, only staff assigned to the design component.
Right.
There are also issues associated with the acquisition of easements. We've had ongoing conversations with power companies about moving that main power line back far enough to be able to facilitate the reconstruction of the interchange, but very positive news that ODOT is actively engaged in the redesign.
Yes, thank you. And then we also had conversation regarding, I think we're in a design point with regards to 99E from Pine to Berg Parkway, so there's, again, a design piece has been done, or it will be in the process of being done, then it's just a matter of funds becoming available to actually pull the trigger and make that project happen. And then I also spoke with him about looking at changing the signal pattern at Pine and 99E. That's become a little bit of a, it has been for, I think, a period of time, a dangerous intersection with both, as cars are feeding into 99E, they both go at the same time, and so as of late, I think, since school started, I think I witnessed probably almost six head-on collisions there, so we just had a one-off conversation with him about looking at changing the signaling to allow each side to go one at a time, to see if that can alleviate some of that. So they are going to look at what they can do about changing the signal pattern, so we'll wait to hear back on that piece. And I think that's all that I have. Counsel, Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the Parks and Rec, there's a new application in for open position there, so hopefully the next council meeting, we can get that approved and get that going. That'd be a good position to get filled. Matilda's still working on getting the survey out to get input from the community on Parks and Rec and what they like, what they don't like, what they want to see, how they feel about current maintenance levels, and so on and so forth. Most of the discussion during the meetings surround, obviously, park maintenance, so I'm assuming that at our workshop, and you say retreat, I'm assuming it's more of a workshop, we'll be discussing that, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it's one of the primary topics on this.
Okay. I thought so.
Do we have a date on that yet?
I guess, 29.
I know we surveyed it.
April 29.
We did settle on the 29th.
April 29, and we will be having it at Pappy's.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
On the library front, Rick, you have a great detailed discussion on the update and the progress of the new library. Sounds really good, and I know they're working on the strategic plan, and Irene is working on an outline for how that strategic plan will come together, and I'm assuming that will be in the near future. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, the Bicycle Committee will be meeting as it does each month on the last I did attend the annual meeting of the Friends of the Library, along with Counselor Hensley and Mayor Hodgson, and also our city administrator and deputy city administrator. Appreciate Rick and Amanda showing up for that. That was a good event. And also, Mayor, I appreciate you doing things like the storytelling. I think that's a way to help humanize city government a little bit, so appreciate you taking time to do that.
It was my pleasure. I had a great time doing it. And Counselor Height was also at the Friends' powwow last night, so we had a great city presence there, which I was glad to see, so I appreciate everyone that went. Counselor Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as was mentioned, I was at the Friends of the Library meeting last night and was impressed by the turnout. It was a very nice meeting, and I dropped off my thing today. I am now a member. A friend. I'm a friend of the library. I, you have C4. Did you cover C4? You did.
I did not.
You did not.
I might need to circle back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, because I usually leave that to you, so I didn't make any notes. And I attended Congressman Schrader's roundtable for the local leadership in our, Erin, in the district. And once again, beat the transportation drum, and he's supposed to be actually following up and sending us a copy of the transportation bill so we can kind of digest it ourselves a little bit.
Just the fagot one?
Yes, and I did express our thanks for what they're doing for 205. CTV5 is not having a February meeting, so I don't have a report for that, and actually, I think that's all I have this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Counsel President Dale.
Mr. Mayor, tonight, for my report, it's Utility Night.
It's Utility Night.
Most everybody's yawning, going, Tim nerds at it again, but it's fun, good stuff tonight. First up, a little legislative update. We live in one of the most, the polite term is dynamic and complex power regulatory environments in the country. How's that, Rick? Is that okay?
That's perfect.
Yeah. Canby Utility is what's called a, in the parlance of the industry, a MOO, a municipal-owned utility. On the other hand, folks like PGE, PPNL, and such are ironically called IOUs, investor-owned utilities. Well, there's some legislation that's getting a lot of press that some folks may have seen that's been sponsored by the IOUs that could have a really negative rate impact on the MOOs when we annex into territories that are currently served by an IOU. It could subject us to the same renewable energy purchase requirements that they have to deal with, for which municipal-owned utilities are not subject to. So in case folks have heard about that, I want to assure you that Cubs' general manager, Dan Murphy, says that our lobbying agents are very, very aggressively pursuing that with the legislature, and he told me he's confident that it will be a good outcome for all of the municipal-owned utilities. So it's been getting some press in the Oregonian lately, so at this point, don't be alarmed, the lobbying process is working. On the fun side, we've got a couple landmarks, events that have happened here recently. Our drinking water in Canby all comes from the Malala River, and there's what's called the Malala River Corridor. It's the upper Malala River, basically from Glen Avon Bridge on up into the mountains. It's a beautiful, fascinating area. It's fun to go to, it's a little bit of a trip. I've done it myself. But after a lot, a lot, a lot of work by the Malala River Alliance, of which Canby Utility is a member, Governor Brown has just designated that corridor to be a scenic waterway, and that's the first one in Oregon in 28 years to be added to that list. What does that mean for Canby? It means further protections to ensure the quality of our drinking water. It places very severe restrictions on development and the impact that development can have on our drinking water, but it also helps to ensure that that area remains open to the public for recreational use, the enjoyment of everyone. It's a huge accomplishment, and I would like to thank our own Gary Potter, who's a member of the Canby Utility Board, for his tireless efforts as our representative on the Malala River Alliance and working with Salem to make that happen. Been a lot of years coming. Those of us that have been around a while can remember when the Malala River Corridor was not a place to go, a very scary place, not a place you'd take your family. And through their efforts and working with the state of Oregon and the Bureau of Land Management, it's really been transformed into a very nice, safe recreational area with good campgrounds, good policing, and very family-friendly. So if you get the chance this summer, go ahead and take a trip up there. There's some really unique geology that you can take pictures of and really see the beauty of our drinking water source. And then finally, Mr. Mayor, coming up, it's Embarrass Bob Night. Our own faithful Bob Cornelius, who's here every night, is terming out as a member of Canby Utilities Board and as its chairman for the past several years, and so he'll be retiring as chair as well. And so I got together with Barb, his administrative assistant, and have a list of accomplishments that Bob has had a part in or overseen in the past six years. Bob came on board Canby Utility when Dirk was the long-term, decades-long, general manager, and so Bob got to help hire and bring aboard Matt Michael as the general manager at the time. Bob was involved in the Westcott Substation expansion. That's the substation that's down across from Fred Myers along 99E, and that was a significant expansion to help Canby have the capacity for growth in the industrial park in particular. Bob has helped with the upgrading of our water infrastructure, which is mostly the big main water lines through town, and as chairman, Bob saw the finalization of the brand-new 2-million-gallon reservoir over on Southwest 13th that greatly expanded Canby's capacity to help ensure that we never run out of water on our peak days in August and have plenty of water to serve growing businesses in the industrial area. Bob was the chairman over the Knightsbridge Substation, which is our brand-new substation down at the end of Knightsbridge and towards Barlow Road, and that brings the ratepayers not only capacity for decades, but also substantial savings on our rates, since we no longer need to pay PGE service charges to bring that power in through their substation. And then Bob had to deal then with Matt moving on and hiring Dan Murphy as our new general manager, and if you've met Dan, it's a good experience, and you know you're in the presence of a professional and a real fun person to be around. And during the interim, while they were looking for Dan, Bob effectively was general manager, spending a lot of time every day helping Canby Utility keep running. And one of the things I kind of want to conclude with for Bob that I've noticed in my 40 years now, Hensley is on, to Canby Utility, is as a chairman, Bob has been committed to ensuring that Canby Utility delivers the best possible value to the ratepayers. And secondly, he's been committed to ensuring that Canby Utility stays on a strong financial footing, and that's not always easy, as our general manager will tell you, especially when it comes to ensuring you have adequate reserves to see yourself, not only through expansions, but also emergencies, and those have been two hallmarks of Bob's chairmanship. And the result has been a very financially sound and stable power company, but also a pretty formidable competitive weapon in the economic development arena. As we compete to bring businesses into Canby, our power rates and our water capacity and rates, and Rick can speak to this, are a pretty impressive mark in the plus column for Canby, as we're able to offer power upwards of 38% cheaper than those IOUs can do, and a really fine source of water. So Bob, thank you for six great years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Betcha. Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would add, if I may, in further embarrassing Bob, that Bob was, you know, we had a really difficult challenge in relocating all of the utilities that we needed to relocate in a very short period of time to be able to initiate our construction project at our library and civic building, and we encountered all kinds of challenges, and Bob was the person that I felt comfortable and confident calling, and he showed up at the site, and we walked the job site, and we identified what the obstacles and the stumbling blocks were, and we sat down and we worked out solutions to each intern, and we would not have the project and the service that we do if Bob hadn't been there every step of the way, and I sincerely appreciate his contribution and the chance that gave me to get to know Bob a little bit personally, a little more than I would otherwise have just seeing you on Tuesday. So it was a wonderful experience for me, and I really, really appreciate your leadership and your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Very good. Thank you. Counsel Height.
Thank you. I have a question, actually, Counsel Dale. So the Malala River starts on Hood.
Oh, it starts up in the foothills of the Cascades.
And then, how do you define upper Malala? Like, where is it? Where does it end?
Think of it basically as what's called the Glen Avon Bridge is kind of the marker, but it's, oh, what would you say, Bob? It's where the road basically goes from two lanes to one lane and winds up in public lands.
Hmm, okay. We should find a map.
Yeah, it's on a map, and in fact, the Malala River Alliance, if you go to their website, they have a great PDF that you can print of the map. It's a fun picnic trip for the kids.
I just can't visualize it, but I'll look it up. Thank you.
As my dad would say, you go to Malala, turn left, go through Dicky Prairie, turn right, and keep going till you see the signs. It is a bit of a trip from here, but it's a good day. It's a good effort.
Thank you. I appreciate you, yeah. I wanted to say congratulations to Cliff Ash, who we're going to approve to the Bike and Ped Committee. He's actually a relative by marriage of mine, so I know he likes bicycling, and I'm excited to bring him into it on a city committee like that. So that's great. And also Don, I don't know how to pronounce his name. Smeeback. Smeeback. He's re-upping for the area, Canby Area Transit Board, so I wanted to say thanks to those guys. And then, library-wise, I think I mentioned it last time, but it's still fines for forgiveness, or fine forgiveness month in February, so you pay, for every dollar you pay, your fines down, the library puts in a dollar. I'm actually going to wait till the end of the month, because I'll probably accrue a few more fines, and then I'll cash out, so I'm kind of excited. Sorry, Irene.
You want to do that before we up the fines?
Yeah. Good point. I'll do it soon.
I know. Forgiveness is going to be cruel.
That's a great gift.
More incentive.
Also, I was excited. It sounds like they're getting the end of the Oregon Trail Cultural Pass, so there's a bunch of cultural passes that the Friends actually pay for, like Japanese Garden, Chinese Garden, Pittock Mansion, et cetera, so a family of four can go for free, super cool for 24 hours. Anyway, we're going to add the Oregon Trail to that, and also the Aviation Museum in Minville, and the Gilbert House in Salem, which is really fun for young kids. So great expansion. I'm sure those will be well-used. The Library Foundation is looking into some matching funds for, after the library opens... The Library Foundation is looking into some matching funds for after the library opens. That's kind of a really mini-update on where they're at. So that's down the road. And then, I've mentioned this before, but the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, I think I've mentioned it several times, but there's been a really great turnout. So basically, the idea is for parents to read 1,000 books to their precares before they begin kindergarten, and there's been a good turnout. There's a few families that have actually done it over the last year. So if you average that out, you know, at least three books a day for their kids. And not even all the logs have been turned in yet, but it sounds like they've recorded officially 19,000 books that have been read due to this program, which is so exciting. So great pre-literacy going on in Canby at the library. I'm impressed by that. And the citizenship class that I think we've referenced a few times, that's full. Apparently, there's 22 people enrolled. There's a waiting list even for it, and a couple of friends of mine are actually volunteering. They're helping out with that class. So it's, you know, kind of a bilingual one. One of them doesn't speak Spanish, one of my friends, the other one's bilingual, but it's exciting. So there's a great connection there with the Latino community in the library through that class. In terms of Canby Area Transit, there's just one announcement. They're putting a temporary bus stop up due to the construction of the Fred Meyer Gas Station. So there used to be a stop right there. They're moving it to the corner of 99E and Knott. So it's in front of the Kowana Store, just for you riders that want to know. That's where the stop is moved temporarily. And for the Canby Adult Center, they are, the AARP volunteers are returning for tax help again this year, beginning, yeah, late January. It'll run through April 15th, so it's free tax help for seniors. And they actually, they did their annual appeal, you know, the Canby Adult Center, and they've rolled, they've raked in a lot of money for that annual appeal, near record numbers, I think, this year. So they wanted to say thank you to everybody who has donated to that. That was great. And then, friends at the library meeting, yeah, just to say a couple other things in addition to what you guys have already said. Apparently, they're up to about 82 members. You know, it's grown. I've been a member for about three years, and it is, it's grown incrementally each year. And with the new library coming online, I anticipate the group growing more. They're expanding their board to 10 people now. It's been eight, and they have a demand for even more board members. That's exciting. So rah-rah. Hats off to the friends. I'm excited about that. And then, yesterday morning, yeah, Congressman Schrader had the roundtable. It was pretty interesting. Superintendents, city managers, school board members, councilors, mayors, and there's some topics that came up. I just wanted to note those themes, because we all went around and spoke about whatever issue we wanted. But a couple of the top themes that I noted that came up, school-wise, they talked about every student succeeds, which is new federal policy, kind of to replace no student left behind, and so no child left behind. So it gives states more local control. So superintendents were happy about that legislation. Transit and roads came up, as Councilor Hensley mentioned. Climate change, housing and homelessness, the Affordable Care Act, infrastructure funding for different jurisdictions, and the urban-rural divide in the county and across the state, really. But those are a couple of themes of note, and it was a good conversation. I was glad to go. And so that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Question for you on the citizen class. When is that being held?
Good question. I don't know. Yeah. I wonder if, I want to say it's on Wednesday night, but I didn't confirm that. Yeah. We'll find out.
If you can find out and let us know, that'd be, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Coleman.
Mr. Mayor, I attended the Canby Kids Super Bowl Breakfast upstairs in the Thriftway, and that was a lot of fun. On the planning front, our next Planning Commission meeting will be on Monday, March the 14th. And I'd just like to say, you know, that Fred Meyer Gas Station is really coming up quick, and to commend the owners of the complex right next to them. They've done some facade improvements, and the removal of the car wash down the way has really improved the look of the landscape, and also that Starbucks in the Safeway complex, I think, adds a lot of energy to that complex. On the traffic safety front, since our last meeting, there was an unfortunate accident that occurred at the intersection of 10th and Ivy. Luckily, as far as I know, no one was hurt in the incident, but it's going to further bring up the discussion of a four-way stop there. Our next meeting will be on Monday, March the 7th, 8:30, at the Public Works Conference Room. And we always encourage citizen input. If you have, if you live in the neighborhood there, or even if you don't, and you have issues, you're more than welcome to come to our traffic safety meetings. Also, another announcement I'd like to make, coming up on March the 12th, is the Canby Rodeo has their coronation at the fairgrounds. And that's a fundraiser for the Canby Rodeo Court, because over the course of the year, they log on about 5,000 miles going around to the different communities, and it's just an awful lot of fun. It's a really nice dinner. It's an auction. You can bid on everything from a plate of chocolate chip cookies to all kinds of other things, and it's just a lot of fun. So I'd encourage you at all to consider that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, sir. Before we move on, Councilor Hensley brought up the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee meeting that I left off my updates. A big conversation piece at that meeting was a conversation about the county's proposal for an increase in the vehicle registration fee. And so they're looking at a couple of different proposals that I think will probably go out to the voters here in November. I think they're still working on language and which approach that they want to take. I will get this information scanned up and emailed out to you guys so you can read it later. But in all, they're looking at, so one piece that they're looking at is, they're looking at a seven-year, $25 per vehicle per year. So we register our cars every two years, so it's a $50 increase when you register your car. But it'll be a county-wide vehicle registration fee, and it's to go strictly to road projects. And they believe the vehicle registration fee increase would generate a total of approximately $60 million in revenue over the seven years. And so the breakdown would be 60% of the funds would go to the county, 40% of the funds, so approximately $24 million would be split based on population between the cities within the county to spend on their own transportation needs within the city. So there was some conversation, most recently, so that was back in December, was the original conversation. In February, there was, discussed a couple alternatives. There was a combination of a $25 vehicle registration fee and the addition of a 3-cent gas tax as an option. There was the option of doing a $5 vehicle registration per year and 3-cent gas tax, or a 10-year, or $10 per year vehicle. So a couple of options are still kicking around and doing that. They included a list of projects that the county would look at doing in and around each of the cities. And in Canby, they, it's all, yeah, it's all rural pieces that would be looked at. So things like Haynes Road, so 99E and Molino Road, let's see, First Avenue, Highway 2, that's more of a Canby, or Escade Way. But we've got, so Highway 213 and Barlow Road, 99E and 211, which is the Canby Markham Highway, Gribble Road is being looked at, Harms Road, Cracksburger Road, and then Miller Road. So those are all rural pieces. And so I've had conversation with, kind of going back to our earlier conversation about, well, what about the roads within the city? And so I had conversation with Commissioner Savis, and I'm slated to have conversations with Chair Ludlow and Commissioner Bernard to find out just where those roads fall in terms of the pavement condition index that they use and that we use as compared to the roads within the city, and if those were pieces that can be put on the project list. Because I think over the long term, they were to get those done, updated, and meet our standards, we could take them over. There's no longer a liability to the county, but that's still in conversation, I believe.
The other piece of that conversation is that they do have allocations for each city.
Correct.
And personally, I would vote to use our portion as a match if we needed to get those up, the ones within the city limits, up to our codes, so we could take them over.
So over, so if the...
Just as a, I mean, it'd be worth a discussion, because it's such a problem here.
Yeah. So if we go with the $25 per vehicle per year vehicle registration fee for Clackamas County, over the seven years, it would, their estimation, revenue to Canby would be a little over $1.8 million that we would be able to use for room improvements or other transportation pieces. So that is a piece that they're looking at. I've got, I still have to find out when they're having more discussion on this piece, but my understanding is that they're trying to iron out which, which one to go out to the voters and which may or may not be supported. So I will get this out to you. We'll probably need to talk about, you know, how, what position we want to take, because they're going, they're going to be asking the C4 members about that, and which, which plan we want to get behind or not get behind. So, or nothing at all. So just to make you aware of that piece. So that was my add-on. Thank you for doing that. So we will move on with the rest of the agenda, which I think I included inadvertently. Yes. Okay. We'll move into the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor and fellow councilors, as published in your packet, the consent agenda tonight had item 6E, Appointment to Canby Utility Board, and that's to fill the slot that Chairman Cornelius is retiring from. That was in anticipation that we would be able to complete interviews of all the applicants and have an appointee for you. Unfortunately, one of the applicants is out of town, so we've not been able to complete that. Hope to have that item for you at the first meeting in March. So the amended consent agenda reads, "Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the February 3, 2016 Council Regular Meeting, the annual liquor license renewals, the appointment of Clifford Ash to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee for a term to end on June 30, 2018, and the reappointment of Donald Smeback to the Transit Advisory Committee for a term to end on March 31, 2019."
One second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Council President Dale, seconded by Councilor Hensley, to approve the consent agenda, which includes the adoption of the minutes of the February 3, 2016 Council Regular Meeting, annual liquor license renewals, appointment of Clifford Ash to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee for a term to end on June 30, 2018, and the reappointment of Donald Smeback to the Transit Advisory Committee for a term to end on March 31, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes 6-0. Next on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the amending and setting of fees for the Canby Public Library. So before we get into that, I get to read my fun little legislative hearing format for everyone. "The matter presently before the hearing body requires a public hearing. All interested persons in attendance shall be heard on the matter. If you wish to testify on this matter, please fill out a yellow comment card and give it to the city recorder at the appropriate time. Please step forward to the microphone, state your name and interest in the matter. Those people that are interested in testifying as either proponents or opponents, please indicate your desire to speak by raising your hands at this time." All right, say none. "For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In so doing, those in favor or opposed may allocate their time to a spokesperson who will represent the entire group. All questions must be directed through the mayor. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. We will get a staff report. Questions, if any, by the hearing body or staff. I will open the public hearing for testimony. We will hear for proponents, proponents for not more than three minutes, opponents for not more than three minutes. I will close the public hearing. We'll have further questions, if any, by the hearing body, and then discussion by the hearing body. A decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing, or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions about the procedure of the hearing? Excellent. So we will move into the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayers, the Council. The Canby Public Library hasn't modified their fines for, since 1994, we've been charging 10 cents for overdue items. Most of the Clackamas County libraries now have been charging 25 cents for a lot of the overdue items, and you can see it in your attachment, A, what you have is what they're charging. Basically, when someone checks out materials, you can get this identical books checked out. One might be from Wilsonville, one might be from Canby. If they're overdue, you're going to pay 25 cents on that Wilsonville book and 10 cents on the Canby book. So libraries in Clackamas County are trying to get consistency in customer service, and by doing this, will provide consistency in customer service. In addition, with the fee schedule that's been listed, we, throughout Clackamas County, we're charging for fees for things that happened, such as lost barcode, lost library card, and some things like that. And these have been charged throughout Clackamas County through a lot of the different libraries, but it hasn't been reflected on our fee schedule. And this is just for transparency, to see what's charged will be reflected.
Do you have any questions?
This is really a very straightforward recommendation and proposal, and in fact, the only people who will see an increase in cost will people who are people that violate the rules. And if you bring your books back on time and the condition you received them, if you don't lose the periodicals, if you don't lose the DVDs and CDs, then they're, or damage them, then there is no fee increase. It just, it simply affects those persons that don't follow the rules.
And then we'll bring in, if you use the projections that were based on the last fiscal year, it could bring in an additional, about $23,000 into the library, and in terms of budgets, we could really use that kind of money.
Having said that, we hope that it doesn't bring any more on, because we want everyone to bring their books back on time.
Right. And it happens, it happens, but...
And as you heard from...
And kids are kids.
Right. Councilor Height wanting to, you know, take advantage of, and I will join her in that boat, because my kids are often, somehow, books end up under beds. I don't know how that happens, but...
On the couch.
Yeah.
But this will go on effect to March 1st, so it wouldn't be effective until any materials that are checked out until March 1st.
All right. Well, that's good.
So it's not current things that you have checked out.
Cut down on that request list from the library. Great. Well, thank you for the, for that. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Well, then I will open up the public hearing and officially see if there's any proponents. None. Great. Opponents? None. I will officially close the public hearing. Any additional questions? No? Discussion?
No, sir.
No, everyone seems to be a-okay. All right. Well, I, yes.
I'm just excited to make the motion. I'll calm down.
We're going to get into that in just a second.
But you have to open it first.
I do, yes. We're going to move into resolutions and ordinances here in just a second. Irene, thank you very much. Appreciate you. And thank you for tackling this, actually, because I, '94 seemed to be...
22 years ago.
A long time.
A long time.
To do that. So thank you for that. All right, we will move into resolutions and ordinances.
The first item we have is Resolution 1233. This is amending and setting fees for the Canby Public Library.
Okay. As we just heard, and close the public hearing on that piece, I will open it up.
All right. "I move to adopt Resolution 1233, a resolution amending and setting fees for the Canby Public Library."
Second that.
Motion's been made by Councilor Height and seconded by Councilor Coleman to approve Resolution 1233, amending and setting fees for the Canby Public Library. Any conversation? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have just passed that, 6-0. Great.
The next item we have is Ordinance 1433. This is amending Canby Municipal Code Chapter 2.20.010, 2.20.040, 2.20.050, 2.20.070, 2.20.080, and 2.20.100 regarding the public library.
Great.
Yes, this is principally clean up to, to address the placement of the fee in the proper place, and also to begin to clean up the language in our city code so it's more consistent with how we do business. As you undoubtedly perused, the ordinances is proposed, probably the most significant item, and I would note in initiating this conversation, that each of the different items relating to the library that you will hear, beginning with the fees and moving through this, have been vetted with and approved and recommended by the library board for approval. So this has had some significant discussion preceding its reaching you. discussion preceding its reaching you. One of the more significant aspects of this actually affects my job and my responsibility to appoint the, the library director. There was an ambiguity between the city charter, which says that the city administrator has the responsibility of appointing, the department has, and the ordinance, the code, which seemed to infer that there was somehow a collaborative effort in this selection process. So the two were at odds. This addresses that issue by simply indicating that, that the selection is made in a manner consistent with and provided by the city charter, which is the document approved by the electorate in the community of Canby, and as such, is the overarching and controlling document for the conduct of business in Canby. Balance of the, of the changes are principally, with one other exception, are principally ministerial. The other significant change is a limitation, and the proposal has been made and supported by the library board, a limitation of terms of office to two consecutive terms. So an individual could serve two consecutive terms, go off for a term, and then come back again, but could no longer if this is approved, sort of three consecutive terms.
So question, I think, can you, because that came up, that was one of my questions when I was reading this, Rick, was, because it talks about, so that they can be on, fine, okay, so hold office for four-year terms from July 1 in the year of their appointment. The expiration of the term of the board member, the city council shall appoint a new member or may reappoint a member for a term of four years. Members shall be limited to two consecutive terms. Does it, I don't recall reading that it spelled out that they needed to be off a year and then could come back on.
Well, for, you can serve two consecutive terms, and then you have to not serve for a period of time, and then you can come back on again. I don't think they make, they distinguish between being off for a year and filling an unfilled term, or, or being off for four years. We didn't provide that level of detail. The underlying and overarching objective was and is to provide opportunities for others with an interest in serving on the library board, that opportunity. And I don't think that there's, that there will ever be a conflict where too many people are trying to get on the board. But, you know, we're hopeful that it generates, that the ability to serve on the library board generates enough interest that we have qualified and quality individuals that want to serve. One concern, of course, is that when you have an individual who is highly competent, skilled, and adds great value to, in their service to the library board, and lose a person like that, it sometimes is difficult to recover. But the fix for that is that, that in the next vacant term, they have an opportunity to reapply.
Thanks for that. And I only bring it up because we kind of ran into this with Canby Utility Board interviews, where one of the people that's interviewing was on, came off, and they've only been off one year.
One year.
There wasn't really any, so there was some dialogue about, well, do we need to set a specific break time, you know, period to be away, or if that was necessary, because this is, I think, a rare opportunity with Canby Utility, since I've been involved in it, but we had four applicants for the one spot.
Right.
So I just didn't know if that was something that we wanted to put in place, or if we needed to, or if that, we felt that that was necessary to do.
Actually, I'd given that quite a bit of thought, although not a lot of dialogue with Irene, and, and moved away from that as a concept, because I can see circumstances under which a skilled individual with an interest in coming back on the, the board who hasn't been off for a full, for a full year may be a huge benefit to the board if they're struggling, and the opportunity to bring somebody back on in less than four years, I think, is great. I think the purpose of providing an open opportunity for more people to serve in this capacity has in fact been met by recruiting for, identifying and appointing somebody that hasn't served two consecutive terms, because of the opportunity that's been presented, and then it's up to the library board and the city council representative, and ultimately, the city councils are determined if the ultimate, if that overarching objective has in fact been that adequate opportunity to, to provide. And, and I would add that, that even with a situation in which an individual has been off for only one year, everybody else in the community still has the same chance to apply, and if that person is the best candidate, then I think that we fulfilled kind of our goal of making sure that people who want to serve have an opportunity to serve.
At the very least, it triggers the process.
Yeah.
To reapply, to be reviewed.
Yeah. I, I like being able to, to have the discretion to bring back a person who's a quality individual, particularly if for any reason the board is struggling with any type, any aspect of their duties or responsibilities.
It could have been that you went plus with four and only had the one guy that had been before, and then you wouldn't be able to appoint him.
Sure.
Are there term limits for other committees consistently? It's just half, not haphazard, but it's varies.
This is a little bit unusual, but this is, is a recommendation of the State Library by.
Oregon Public Library.
Oregon Public Library standards, and it's, it's a concept and recommendation that has been embraced by our library board as a not inappropriate step. I don't know that it was, you know, wholeheartedly endorsed, but, but one of, one of the goals of our library board is to be, is to try to be more in sync with the statewide processes that are in place for, for library boards and for libraries. And they're undertaking a lot of, of work, and Irene's doing a great job of leading them through this entire reanalysis of where we are as, as a Canby library, where we are as a Canby library board, and, and just trying to, to do what she can to document and, and organize more clearly the duties, responsibilities, and expectations.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I'm just wondering if we're going to look at the other advisory committees and duplicate that model. We have Cub, now the library board. I'm just wondering, for the sake of consistency, if we're going to talk about term limits on the other committees as well.
No, not.
Let's sleep in dogs.
We have some committees that we have a lot of trouble keeping.
Filling, yes, that's true.
Members, and so I would worry a little bit about that. I, I would suggest that on a case-by-case basis, if, if the issue arises, if we continue to have 11 applications for seven posts, then, then I think maybe it opens the door for, for that conversation.
Okay.
But if we have no applications and two vacancies, then we want to keep everybody we can.
That's right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt Ordinance 1433 and Ordinance Amending Canby Municipal Code Chapters 2.20.010, 2.20.040, 2.20.050, 2.20.070, and 2.20080, and 2.20.100 regarding the Canby Public Library.
I'll second. Motion made by Council Hensley, seconded by Council Roche to approve Ordinance 1433, amending Canby Municipal Code Chapters 2.20.010, 2.20.040, 2.20.050, 2.20.070, 2.20.080, and finally, 2.20.100 regarding the public library. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry 6-0.
The next item we have is Ordinance 1434. This is amending Canby Municipal Code Chapter 2.10.010 regarding nominations for elective office. In January, the Elections Division came out with the 2016 Candidates Manual, which describes how candidates run for office. And I noted in there, they had changed the wording again, stating that it was the city elections official responsibility to take the signature sheets to the county. And they changed this, they, they sort of flip-flopped back and forth a few years. And so it's staff's recommendation that we keep it the candidate's responsibility due to limited staffing. The rest of the changes in this, they're just more or less housekeeping so that it's current with how we process the paperwork. And the Elections Division, the Candidates Manual really describes how we do everything. So it was just more or less cleaning up the wording in that chapter.
Great. Any, any questions at all?
I did have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Kim, it's not part of the change text, but up in dot 010A, it says, "No elector shall sign more than one nomination petition for each office to be filled." So my example be if there's three council seats open, an elector can sign three petitions, or one?
It would be, I have to think about that.
The latter has been, the former has been.
For each position.
Okay. So you can sign, there's three opens?
Yeah.
Okay. But no signing both for anything like mayor or any other office, right? Got to pick one. Got to pick your favorite candidate?
I'll pick one candidate.
Okay. Thanks.
Good question. That's interesting. You'd think you would just allow him to be on the ballot.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of like the spirit of.
Yeah. I sign petitions sometimes for things that I wouldn't love for, but hey, it has the right to be on the ballot, so.
So if you have a fear of that, make sure that yours is the first petition turned in, because that's the one that gets counted.
Yeah.
Right.
Be early. And that is an interesting twist there. Council Parker, he's thinking.
I know.
I know. I start smelling smoke there in a minute.
That's something you could remove if you want.
I just never thought about that before.
Yeah.
You know, when I'm used to putting my signature on something, I think about initiative petitions, and I don't think of it ever being limited to what I can put my signature on. But if we've got two positions open for the city council, I can only sign two petitions?
If there's more than two running, yes.
Yeah.
But like, there's three, so if there's four candidates for three seats, you can only sign three petitions.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Just one more thing to keep track of.
Yeah. I don't know. That's why I carry a three-by-five card in my wallet, so I know which ones I've signed, too, on initiative petitions. Oh, wait, already signed.
So that is something that if, that is, that's up to our purview to change that out if.
Yeah, if you wanted to strike that.
That's fine.
Okay.
Do you want to strike, Council Parker?
We're good.
You sure?
All right.
All right.
Take a motion.
I would love a motion.
I like these library motions, I have to say. Well, and elections for that. I move we adopt Ordinance 1434, amending Canby Municipal Code Chapter 2.10.010 regarding nominations for elective office.
Thank you. I'll second. Motion made by Council Height, seconded by Council Roche to approve Ordinance 1434, amending Canby Municipal Code Chapter 2.10.010 regarding nominations for elective office. Any other discussion? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry 6-0. Thank you all. A real new business this evening, city administrator business and staff reports. Not this evening. Okay. Next opportunity for citizen input. Daniel Bobb. Okay. We'll go into action review.
You have adopted Resolution 1233, and you've approved Ordinance 1433 and 1434 to move to a second meeting on March 1st.
Great. Thank you, Kim. And Joe, this body doesn't have an exec session, do we?
This body does not.
Perfect. 13.5 item, 13 and a half, I should say, on my agenda here, is to remind all of you, do not go away. We are going to move into the Urban Renewal Agency meeting right after we adjourn this one, so don't go anywhere. That means the three of you either here watching.
All three of you.
The door's been barred.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made by Council Hensley, seconded by Council Roche to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. We are adjourned. We will now move into our Canby Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
All right. Give the TV folks five seconds. Good evening, Canby, and welcome to the Canby Urban Renewal Agency Special Meeting of February 17, 2016. With the indulgence of the agency, I would like to rely on the city council's opening ceremonies, and go ahead and proceed.
First class.
Next up, we have the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the October 7, 2015 URA meeting, and the minutes from the November 18, 2015 URA work session.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Hudson, seconded by Commissioner Hensley, to approve the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the October 17, 2015 URA meeting, and the minutes from the November 18, 2015 URA work session. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry 7-0. Next up, we have citizen input. Do we have any citizens that would like to input? All right, seen none. Kim, community announcements?
I have none.
Having none, we'll move on to new business, which is the Canby Urban Renewal District Annual Report. And with that, we'll hand it over to agency administrator Rick Robinson.
Yeah, and looking out at the audience, it looks like I have this on my own. See how quickly I can think on my feet.
I was wondering about it.
Yeah, where did Renata end up going?
Well, the good news is I've gone through it four or five times to get it to this point. The, the city has, the Urban Renewal Agency has a responsibility to file an annual report each year, which summarizes both the activities that have occurred during the previous year and the activities that have occurred over the life of the Urban Renewal District. It provides historic background and information relating to urban renewal agencies generally, and then very specifically, Canby's Urban Renewal District. This annual report has, has a number of highlights for the 2014-15 fiscal year, including, and I would encourage members of the public and others to go to the Urban Renewal website and, and get a copy of this report, because it does have some great, come on in. It does have some, some great visual appeal and, and provides insight and information relating to not only the projects that we've completed in, in 2015, 14-15, but also in prior years. As they're passing out these, these reports, I'd like to point out to you that this program has been extraordinarily successful for the city of Canby. Not only are we poised over the next several years to accept and support new industry and new jobs in the community, but we also have a history and track record of delivering on the, the challenge and initiative of bringing new jobs to the community. From the inception of the Urban Renewal District, the assessed value has grown from about 200 million, excuse me, 100 million to about 220 million dollars, so an increase of about 120 million due to development, and that's a substantial number. We are including, this year, as we provided to you at the beginning of the last budget cycle, a five-year financial analysis to, to give you insight not only into what we're proposing to spend on projects in, in the budget year and the most recently completed year, but also to identify how we're going to pay for those projects. One of the initiatives that we, the three of us have been working on, is a process under which we're able to describe to you more eloquently, more completely, and more succinctly the probability of success in the future of the decisions that you're making today relating to, to economic development projects and programs specifically. So if you spend the money today and commit to a project that may have several years of life, and that it causes you to incur debt or some financial obligation, we want to show you that in fact you, you have the capacity and the ability to not only meet that new obligation, but existing obligations from, from prior years. We. We have made a commitment, the Urban Renewal Agency, based on the actions of its directors in the 2015-16 budget year, to the Canby Fire District. And that commitment was one that I viewed as extremely important in fulfilling the commitment that we had made to them, that former councils had made to them a number of years ago. And it's been a pleasure working with Chief Davis, the Canby Fire Board, in identifying, defining projects that were appropriate urban renewal, fundable projects, and then putting in place the funding mechanism, which over the course of, again, looking out for fiscal years, will allow us to fully meet the financial commitment that we've made to Canby Fire District. So we're really proud of that and that accomplishment. And I also point out that in 2014-15, the Urban Renewal District did present to the community several sculptures on First Avenue that are beautiful. I was actually walking First Avenue yesterday just to take a quick look at them again. They're something worth seeing over and over again. I'm sure that our staff, who are much more knowledgeable than I am on these matters, can fill you in in greater detail than I have.
So Rick has given a really high-level overview of the report. A lot of the sections you've seen in the past, but the viewing public and people that are interested in urban renewal can really benefit from that, as are the goals, frequently asked questions, how urban renewal works, because it's not an easy concept to understand. We've been around a while, but the average citizen might not, so we reiterate that. You see some pretty pictures here about Community Park. That's an ongoing contract with Wilderness International. Our investment of 13,000 is going a long way in leveraging 22 youths and 36 volunteers to do great work there. So that continues to evolve. Rick's touched on the public guard already. I'm not sure if we talked about the quiet zone yet, but we've made quite a bit of progress on that. We met with the Federal Railway Association and laid out our plans that the city engineers had developed. We discovered a challenge around the turning radius on Elm Street. It's just not wide enough, so that's the current challenge that we need to get past. We've discovered a solution, which would be moving one of the power poles back. It's a reasonable cost. It's just a matter of ODOT finding the money to adjust the turning radius as the way they should be. We're in negotiations with ODOT. We're hoping that that can be resolved, and we have money in the budget to address some of this. It's just taking a little longer than we thought because of this particular issue. And Rick, you might want to add in some new updates to that.
We actually had quite an extensive conversation about that earlier and during the regular city council meeting, so that's been covered very well.
Good enough. And Rick already covered the Fire District investments, so that's half of the initial obligation. Hasn't been negotiated for meaningful improvements on there, and so you see some of the pictures of the work that's undergone already. And then, of course, our pride and joy, the Library Civic Building. You can see it emerging before your eyes every day. There's the details on that project there. And then, as a quick overview, major accomplishments in the district, a Sequoia Parkway extension a couple of years ago, the beautiful First Avenue redevelopment that we keep building on, the police station that we've enjoyed for several years now, the industrial park that's going crazy with lots of interest right now. Overall, I think we estimated 78 million in assessed value alone in the Pioneer Industrial Park with the new buildings that have been constructed since inception. And then, a lot of road projects that the report goes into on pages 11 and 12. Then, interest, the initial focus was on the industrial area. Then we shifted to downtown with street rate improvements, entry signage, et cetera, weight park improvements a couple of years ago, and then leveraging some investment from the Urban Renewal District to work with the cinema, attract that to town, and the Andrews Building. This year, on the facade improvement program, the liquor store has a new face, looking much better than it did, and Trinity Counseling is actively on its way now. So that's the latest on that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Haley to walk through some of the numbers.
So on page 16, the list of remaining projects looks a little different than it has in the past, but it should be familiar to council. It's color-coded to kind of correspond to the projection on page 25. And again, the products have been grouped based on that work session that happened last May. So the green projects are projects that we have in process and have committed to. Yellow projects are projects that we're still considering that for future consideration. The orange peachish color are projects that were in the original plan that we're no longer considering at this time. And then the lavender blue at the bottom are other potential opportunities that have been identified. So it's color-coded, and again, you'll see on the projection that the green is what we are going forward with at this time. Page 17 looks pretty familiar. Key is that when urban renewal is formed, there's a maximum indebtedness, or it's just 51 million, and we still have about 12 million left of that to do any of these potential projects. The debt outstanding looks exactly like it did last year. We have not issued any additional long-term debt, and so that payoff period is exactly the same. So with the current payment structures of the debt, they would be paid off in 2036, with the earliest we could pay them off due to restrictions and prepayments of 2022. On page 18, it looks a little different in that we added the assessed value growth. Previously, we've always shown the tax increment revenue growth, which is the blue line, but you'll see that they correspond trend-wise. On page 19, we've done payoff point projections again. We've established that the district will be in existence until we're able to fully pay off the debt. And so looking at projections of revenue and when that could occur, a 5% appears to be, is a conservative estimate. Again, if you look at the averages on page 18, we've averaged more in the 14% range, but in some years, like 2014, there's only a 2% growth. But the current year, we had a 5% growth, right on track with our projections, which you see here. And again, it's conservative. So with these projections, the payoff is between 2027 and 2028. The difference in the graphs has to do with directly contracted debt and how long you continue operations. But you can see, even if we continued operations a little bit farther and went to the maximum indebtedness, the payoff period would be about the same. Page 20 is the actual revenue impacts on the different taxing districts. So if you freeze the value besides the 3% growth, taxing districts get that, and everything above that goes to URA. This is how they would be allocated if the URA didn't exist. Again, however, you wouldn't have that 120 in assessed value if you hadn't have made the investment. So keep that in mind as you look at this, but this gives you those numbers by taxing district. And you can compare that to page 22, which were the projections and the major taxing districts at the time when the plan was developed. And last year, we had added the graph on page 21, which just kind of depicts those estimates versus actual in graphic form. If you move to page 23, this is a financial summary since inception, similar to what's been there since we've been doing this report. On page 24, you have last year's actuals and this year's budgeted numbers. Again, Rick already highlighted some of the projects we have in process. Page 25 is that five-year projection, which the council had seen, but it has been updated for 15 actuals and 15-16. It says projected instead of budgeted, because since we've done the budget, we have some projections in tax revenue and other things that we have incorporated into this, so it's as current as we can make it. And then last page highlights the success in overall of the district, showing that we've had that 120 million in assessed value to the district since inception. Any questions?
Mr. Chair. The mayor beat you to it by just a little bit.
Well, here, I'll bring it to you anyway.
First off, great report. Thank you. I appreciate this report tremendously, and each year, you guys have done a tremendous job of providing the financial fine-tuning to it, and I appreciate that immensely. I, again, want to commend this group and the history of this agency, and the things that we've done and how we've done it. You know, I look at the public art piece downtown, and my wife was an art history major, and so we have... I look at art as what is appealing and what I would put in my house, and my wife has a much deeper appreciation and explanation than I do. But I think that was a crucial piece. Those have been crucial pieces to downtown that we've added, and they have been conversation pieces, both, I mean, good, bad, and indifferent. They've been conversation pieces, and I appreciate it. The Fire District piece that we did recently, I think, was a sound move on our part to do that, based on what's here in terms of, we're looking at, you know, the purchase of a new fire engine, a new medical unit, and then remodeling of the fire station to meet pieces that they need at, I think, a lesser agreed-upon price, shall we say, or involvement. And so there's a lot of really great things happening. Those are my comments. Questions for you guys is, so the quiet zone piece is kind of tied to the development aspect of that purchased block. Do we have any updates on where that's at or what is occurring?
I've reached out twice... Are we talking about the Elm Street development?
Yes.
I've reached out twice in mid-December and late-January, and I have not heard back. We were, the way we left the conversation was to figure out what the maximum building footprint could be based on parking requirements, and we wanted to have an in-depth discussion with the developers to figure that out. So we have yet to schedule that meeting.
Okay. And then, any other updates in terms of the industrial park? And I know that there's a lot of tire-kicking and door slamming still, but...
I've talked with Project Borealis yesterday. I'm getting them information tomorrow, so that's good news.
Good.
I think that the project that was looking at the Wigan parcel has gone quiet. They were looking at about 40 acres, so I'm not as hopeful as I was initially about that one. But Blue Ice is the one that would instigate the extension of Fourth Avenue. Unfortunately, it's not, not bad. We were going to be going to ODOT tomorrow, but they pushed that meeting up just because their agenda was full with other things now to march. It's still not a problem with the company, so we're all good. ODOT has some restrictions on the types of things they can use the immediate opportunity fund for, which is primarily the road and not some of the infrastructure that we had hoped they would fund. So we are not likely to get the 900,000 that we asked for, but we'll still get a substantial amount. I'm thinking between 500 and 600,000. So I've doubled back with the state, Special Public Works, and they're willing to increase their loan amount. So we can still get the project covered, and that investment will generate the revenue to repay the loan. It's still a great deal for the city. I mean, I think our actual cash dollar investment is around 200,000 on a $1.3 million project. Doesn't get a lot better than that.
It doesn't, no.
So.
Thank you both. Appreciate that.
Mr. Parker?
Well, the mayor said what I said is, was going to, is that six years ago, we, when someone would come to us and say, "What's going on with the Urban Renewal District?", we couldn't hand them this and say, "Here it is, all the information you need, why it was formed, what we're doing, and what the finances are." So twice this last year, I've had people come up to me and saying, "What's going on with that thing?" And I was able to get copies of this and give it to them. So this is excellent staff work. And it, often when we do something good, and then we continue doing that same thing, we don't acknowledge how inadequate it was before. And so just because this is as good as last year doesn't mean that you guys haven't worked hard over the, over the years to get us there. The second thing, and Tracy, I know I don't have four votes for this, but I still want to get it on the record, okay? Did I understand you correctly that if we go up to our full indebtedness, it will not change the payoff date?
It will be within one year, yes.
Thank you.
Did you have something to add about the quiet zone comment Brian had had? Or something? I don't know.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Because I think we're pursuing that with or without the development, but I don't know.
And the point of order?
Yeah, it just would have, and I guess I could go a little more detail, but one of our challenges in the quiet zone in addressing the needs on Elm Street and its connection to First Avenue, both west of Elm and east of Elm, is that First Avenue doesn't line up there. And that creates a problem for traffic crossing. It creates a problem for traffic traveling north and south. And the solution that we had developed ties together both the project that we were contemplating between, and thank you for asking that question, between Elm and Douglas, which was the creation of a one-way street to handle the traffic, which would have incidentally allowed us to increase parking capacity on First Avenue, something that's been a request on books for a long time. As well as the, so that would be what would happen with Elm to Douglas, but on Elm Street itself, north and southbound from the railroad tracks, northbound to, to just north of Elm Street, we would put a median, so to allow, to prevent cross-traffic that now creates so many problems. And it would be a right turn in only for traffic turning, it would be westbound on Elm Street, and it would alleviate a lot of the traffic and a lot of the bottleneck and a lot of the concern of, and it'd be a lot of concern that's expressed right now relative to our ability to mitigate the overall traffic impact and reduce the risk associated with going quiet on that particular interchange.
Perfect. Is there just something else?
I wanted to ask you what I mentioned about facade improvement. Would it be appropriate to bring that on the table now, or do you want to deal with that with the administrator during your discussions?
Probably new business item, why not? Well, it's just information for you, Rick. Commissioner Parker had asked myself and the vice chair if we were willing to engage in a discussion about, perhaps enhancing the facade improvement program to cover, so to speak, reverse facades, in particular areas like the Holly Mall parking area and behind the credit union, because they're so highly visible and have a definite cosmetic effect on the attractiveness of the downtown. And we both concur that'd be a good discussion to have.
Yeah, I think it's a good discussion. I think that there's some potential. We do have facade improvement funds budgeted in our projections as well, and this is one of the values of doing long-term planning. So it's not a program that we're anticipating, and it's at the highest priority, would be here today and not here tomorrow. So the funds exist, and you, as commissioners, get to define, the directors get to define how you would choose to allocate those funds. And reverse facade improvements have a definite place, particularly given the high visibility on Second Avenue, and only using it as an example and not the reason, the Holly Mall.
I would also, I think, too, I think the conversation wasn't just Holly Mall, but also down by that parking lot by...
Grand buildings. And we're going to be using that area more for civic events and that sort of thing. So I just, when we... So I just, when we first set up the facade program, the idea, we were thinking about First Avenue. And I've had property owners at both locations, Pappy's and Putting River, and asking about it. And I said, "I'll bring it to the agency and see if that's something that's worthy of discussion at least."
Yeah, I think we can define a program. Now, I wouldn't envision, at least in the early stages, until we know we have the resources to support it, I wouldn't envision increasing the overall budget that we've established for facade improvements, which is 25,000. But it still gives us tremendous opportunities to begin to improve, it's called reverse?
What is that, reverse facade?
Backdoor facade.
Backdoor facade.
I think it's a fascinating idea. It's within the Urban Renewal area, and so it's certainly something that we should have further conversations and maybe work with staff to define a program that could support.
And Tim, to further define that on whatever first facade. I think that's your nomenclature. But on Second Avenue, for example, where we have Holly Mall going in, and then we have several businesses with entrances onto that parking lot, that, in my mind, that's as visible and public as First Avenue.
You essentially have two facades.
Essentially have a facade on the front and back. So I wouldn't advocate an increase in the funding on it, but there have been years where we have not utilized all of those funds, so.
So Rick, if there's any staff diligence to be done, and in particular, if there's language that needs to be changed, can you go ahead and cite that on the agenda for wherever you feel appropriate?
Absolutely. And yeah, and we have actually fairly substantial budgets established for facade improvement programs.
This, we are anticipating an application from the Kiwanis this year. That's the only one that we will be hopefully bringing to you soon.
Very good. Does that meet the spirit?
Thank you. You nailed it.
All righty.
Two more questions in terms of space inquiries. Any movement on the old Clackamas Federal Credit Union building?
I've not heard anything on that. I'm sorry, no.
And then, the spot where the pawn shop was, or maybe currently is, but they're moving...
They moved to San Diego.
Is that a...
I don't know.
I haven't heard anything either.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the ladies tonight? Excellent report as always. Thank you so very much, very, very much.
Thank you for bailing me out on that.
Mr. Administrator, do we have any other new business to conduct tonight?
No, we do not.
We do have an executive session, however, correct?
It moved that we go into executive session under ORS 192.660, parent 2, parent E, real property. And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Hudson, seconded by Commissioner Hensley, to go into executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660, parent 2, parent E, real property. If you'll bear with me for a few minutes here, I'll read the language for that. "The Urban Renewal Agency will now recess this meeting to meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.660, parent 2, parent E, which allows the agency to meet an executive session to discuss those topics. Only representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. The agency will adjourn to the City Hall Conference Room to hold its executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the session, we may reconvene the meeting in the City Hall Conference Room and conduct any further business that needs to be taken care of." Kim, do we need a motion to recess? Or just declare?
We need a motion.
All right. Need a motion to recess to executive session?
Submit.
Is there a second? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we now go to executive session in the conference room. Good night, Canby. Thank you.
Thanks.